All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, June 13th. The record reflect the starting time of 7:02. With that being said, Clerk Swope, would you please take the role?
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Garza. There are six members present at quorum. Councilmembers Spitzley and Garza are absent. And you, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, councilmembers or Mayor Shore, do we have anybody that needs to be remembered tonight during our moment of meditation? Clerk Swope?
Thank you, President Hussein. I'd like us all to keep in our thoughts Sally Lorian, who was a longtime active participant in our community. She's a former member of the Lansing Park Board and an active volunteer with the Riverwalk Theater, as well as many other community activities. So if we could keep Sally Lorian's family in our thoughts.
All right, are there others? All right, seeing none, if you would please join me in a moment of meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of May 16th and May 23rd.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes as written for the 16th and the 23rd. Thank you.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute and recognition of the Lansing Juneteenth Celebration and the State of Michigan Juneteenth Holiday.
All right, Councilmember Brown.
If I could get Marilyn Rogers and any committee members up here, please? Well, it is my honor this evening to be able to present this resolution. So I'll just read it all because I think it's important to the great work and of course the recognition. Resolved by the City Council for the City of Lansing, whereas the oldest African-American holiday was first recognized on June 19th, 1865, and is now an official state holiday in 15 states across the country. It was on June 19th, 1865, that news of the Emancipation Proclamation, which President Lincoln signed on January 1st, 1863, reached the slaves of Texas. And whereas learning of their freedom, June 19th, 1865, became the true independence day for African-Americans in the United States. The slaves immediately left the plantations congregated in the cities and began celebrating their freedom by praying, feasting, dancing, and singing. And whereas this day was named Juneteenth Day, representing the joys of freedom and new beginnings, commemorating the end of slavery in the United States by celebration of liberty, educating the community about the heritage, and promoting positive cultural interaction. And whereas the 29th Annual Lansing Celebration of Juneteenth and the 18th Year Recognition of Juneteenth Day as a State of Michigan holiday will kick off on June 16th at Lansing Community College with keynote speaker, the Honorable Shawna Dunning's. And whereas in honor of the memory of its founder, the late Reverend Dr. Michael C. Murphy, the 2022 Juneteenth African-American Parade will take place on Saturday. June 18th, this Saturday, this Saturday, June 18th at JW Sexton High School with this year's grand marshals, Mr. Willard Walker, and, yes, the legend, and the U.S. Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lansing City Council hereby recognizes the 29th Annual Lansing Celebration of Juneteenth and the 18th Year Recognition of the State of Michigan's Juneteenth Holiday. We extend our appreciation to the Juneteenth Committee for all of their work in the continuing the founding theme, Juneteenth, where the reunion begins. We wish you much success.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I would like to move that we...
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I'm gonna, yeah. I just want to, everyone here who knows, who knows me, knows that Marilyn Plummer has been someone who has been with me for a long time in the House and as mayor. We all know the importance of Juneteenth. And Marilyn has taught so many people the importance of Juneteenth. In our first year in the legislature, she started teaching and teaching, and by the time we were done, I had legislators, Republican legislators, coming up to me and saying, "We want to copy what Lansing is doing in our cities and our towns." It is so exciting to have the Juneteenth Committee here, these incredible people. I am so excited for the parade coming up, I'm excited for all the events. So I want to thank these fine individuals. I have a proclamation also, but you don't get it today. You get it, you get it on Saturday. You get it during the events, but I do appreciate all that you're doing and thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Again, Marilyn Rogers Plummer, on behalf of the Lansing Juneteenth Committee, we're excited to be before you today, to thank you for your support, to share with the City of Lansing all that we are doing in our 29th year. It's good to be back in the city parks and to be able to share and communicate and just to enjoy one another. So that is what Juneteenth is all about. We refer to it as the reunion of the celebration of the city. And we've been working very hard. And with me today are some of my members, and the other members are hard at work doing what they have to do to make Juneteenth be very successful. So with me today, we have Randy Watkins, we have Angela Matthews, and I have Susan Henderson. And I'd like for them to tell you just a little bit of their contributions to the Juneteenth Celebration this year. Yep, starting with Susan.
Okay, I'm Susan Henderson. I'm over facilities. Everything that goes into the park.
Yep, we need you to step right up to the microphone.
I'm over facilities, and everything that comes into the park usually has to go through me. I'm responsible for the tents and everything, you know, that goes with the tents and the tables and the chairs. And then it's a lot of work, but it's fun because we all come together. And we just, you know, we just, we all melt together with everything. And having the people like Randy and Angela, and other people who are on the team, we try to get everything, and hopefully everything works out. And I understand the weather's supposed to be wonderful this weekend, hopefully, because we have been in there where it was pouring down rain, but we still, we still make it. But we still, we have flyers for everybody, so we'll be giving out the flyers, and hopefully everybody comes and joins us. The park opens up on Friday at 4:00, and on Saturday, I'll be there, I'll be there from, on Friday, at 8:00 in the morning for Showmobile to come, so I'm there for all the stuff to come into the park. So looking forward to that. And so we hope everything goes okay, and we hope everything kind of melts together and everybody come out and enjoy themselves.
Yes. Thank you, Susan. All right. All right, thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Angela, if you can share with us about some of our entertainment, some of the great things that are happening over the next few days.
Well, listen, everyone, I'm the cheerleader of the bunch. I'm the rowdy one, the one that gets everything going. And so I'm inviting you, 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 and you, you watching on television, every single council, I'm looking for all of you, all of you. I'm looking, I'm looking around, because I'm going to be looking for you to come. You can come Thursday, LCC, 6:00 p.m. at the Michigan Room, at the, yeah, I think it's Gannon, Michigan Room. It's going to be absolutely phenomenal, food, and then you'll know about the program. Friday, if you want to get your little hustle on and want to have just a little bit of fun, come on out Friday evening from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. Going to have a great time as everyone is setting up their particular vendor booths. Saturday, we blazing off with the parade at 11:00. I see kids in the room. I want to see kids on those parade routes. I want to see you out there because it's going to be awesome and fantastic. And then we're going to go to St. Joe Park, where it's going to be music and fun, things for the kids, dancing, youth arena, youth area for entertainment. We're going to have R&B, we're going to have gospel, we're going to have jazz. 496 West is going to be there. And then we have our headliner, his name is Yan C., awesome saxophone player. Look, don't be boring and sit at home. Just don't do it. I'm looking at you. I want to see you out on this weekend for our Juneteenth Celebration.
Thank you, Angela.
How are you going to beat that? You got to follow that.
He has some very good news, something that's very new this year.
So this year, my name, Randy Watkins, and I am working with the children's activities. And we're going to have games and prizes for the children. Also, I work with the Lansing branch of the NAACP, and we are working with the Juneteenth to hold a job fair. So Saturday morning from 11:00 to 3:00. Thank you. Because I'm going to be there all day, so I'm going to, you know. So anyway, from 11:00 to 3:00, we're going to have a job fair. Capital Air Michigan Works is joining us and helping us schedule this job fair. We'll have about 30 employers there, so you can come out, see what the employers are offering, enjoy the food vendors if you have children. There'll be numerous games set up for them. There's going to be a petting zoo where Prouse Pets is coming out, bringing some pets for the kids to join, visit with. We also have a private individual who's bringing out their pony for pictures. And so we just have, I hope, a lot of good activities for the children set up for Saturday. So please join us. Thank you.
So in closing, we hope that we have made you feel welcome. Lansing is what we love. It's all about us, and we expect to see all of you to make it a great day for you and your families. Lastly, you can find all of that, those details that were mentioned at our website, which is www.lansingjuneteenthcelebration.org. And I thank you again. We have extra flyers that we'll make sure that we put in the lobby, so you can pick them up on your way out. Thanks again. All right. You're an honor to be a part of it. Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All our flyers, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, our next special ceremony is a tribute declaring June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Lansing.
President Hussein.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, and anyone else that is here for this particular resolution, please join us down in the well. Thank you so much.
I always feel like when I'm at home because I think of so many guys. All of my life.
All right, let's make sure this is working. Let me first say just what a pleasure this is to get to be able to present this on behalf of the Lansing City Council, in terms of our recognition of and our support for our LGBTQ community right here in the City of Lansing. If folks don't know, I love history. I'm a history teacher. But June as Pride Month dates back to the Stonewall riots in 1969, which was in direct response essentially to a police raid of the Stonewall Inn, which was a gay club that was egregiously violent. And so since that time, the LGBTQ community throughout the country has recognized June as really an opportunity to talk about the community, to talk about and advocate for equity, for inclusion, and the like. It wasn't until, I believe, 1999 that our federal government finally recognized June as Pride Month. This was actually the second term of Mr. Bill Clinton. And then it wasn't until last year that our state legislature officially declared June as Pride Month in the State of Michigan. We certainly wanted to locally show our support for our LGBTQ community, brothers and sisters, by doing something at the local level. So with that being said, I do have a resolution in front of me. What I would like to do is to first read that, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to Mayor Shore, Mr. Lopez, and our other guests. So the resolution reads as, "Whereas the City of Lansing cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas all are welcome in Lansing to live, to work, to play, and every family deserves a place to call home, where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the City Council denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas June is celebrated nationally and worldwide as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in commemoration of the 1969 Stonewall Rebellion in New York City. And whereas the realities of COVID-19 have caused the LGBTQ+ community and its allies to reimagine the way pride is celebrated. And whereas the City of Lansing appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council declares the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Lansing, and urges residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community, and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice." And with that, Vice President Wood, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the, yes. We have a motion on the floor for the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shore.
Well, I don't want to be repetitive and certainly ditto to all of that. It's just, it's great to be here in celebration of Pride Month. We've been doing this for many years, and it's really an honor here in Lansing to be able to step up and be leaders. We also did a proclamation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll read the last paragraph that says, "Whereas though tremendous strides have been made, we must keep in mind the struggles of our LGBTQIA friends and neighbors that they continue to endure. We carry a responsibility to stand with them and fight discrimination and bigotry as it's encountered. And now therefore I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as LGBTQIA Pride Month in Lansing. And I urge all residents to join me in honoring and celebrating the strength and determination of all those in the community." And I think that is important because we know that the job's not done. We know that there is still a lot of work to do. So we celebrate, we celebrate that we are a welcoming community, that we are excited to be this, this community of kindness, but we also know there's a lot of work to do. So when organizations such as many of these gentlemen here and so many others in the crowd and on TV represent, when they stand up, you know, I stand with them, and I'm proud to do that. So thank you all, thank you for being here. I'm sure Lorenzo has just a few words to say.
A few words?
Oh, you want me to start? Oh, well, goodness, this never happens. So, thank you, Mayor Shore, thank you, Council. I am Ben Dowd, part of Suits in the City. And I also want to make sure folks know within our community that Lansing Pride will also be happening this year on August 13th. Actually, the mayor and I met today to discuss Lansing Pride. We've got support from the mayor and the city right behind the events that are happening, so that'll happen August 13th in Old Town, so look forward to that. Follow everything you want to see on lansingpride.org, as well as follow us on Facebook and social media. But this is huge, right? Like, we've come a long way, and there's still a lot of, a lot of work to do. Pay attention to what's happening in our community, state and federal levels. We've come a long way, but there are, there are things on the cusp of question of whether or not that lasts. So as you, as you go out to the polls and you do things, make sure you think of our full community when that happens. So thank you all for the support, we appreciate it.
City Council, Honorable Mayor, we'd like to thank you for acknowledging who we are. Oftentimes, there's a misconception of what the, who the LGBTQ community really is. It is not a monolithic community. It's very diverse. We have serious issues confronting this community. Homelessness is a very serious issue. Drug addiction, alcoholism, rejection of individuals who actually get kicked out of their homes, here in Lansing, Michigan, by the way, not knowing where to go, what to do. But we know, I represent Suits in the City, which is almost 20 years old. Ben Dowd is the vice chair, but he's also the chair of Lansing Pride. Jim is one of our board members. So we acknowledge that you allow us to be here, and we want to make sure, we want to make absolutely sure that our community is acknowledged, that it reflects the diversity of the city employees, and it reflects the entire City of Lansing. Because there are forces, and I shall be brief, there are forces today that would want us to go backwards, to make us go back into the closet. But I can assure you, the people up here, we will never, ever go back into the closet. So I want to thank also Mayor Shore, because tomorrow, we're using the suite as part of Pride Day here in Lansing for the Love Nuts, on behalf of Mayor Shore. And thank you all again to the Lansing City Council. Thank you so much. I've not heard so many years. I'm only, oh my God. I'm the attorney for so many administrations. This is that young man, I know the people in back, and of course, and also, I gotta say, I'm a...
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
All right, do we have any councilmember comments tonight? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to say thank you so much to the Council President for organizing a community cleanup this weekend in the Waverly area, kind of in between the Ingham and Eaton neighborhood mix. It was a great time, it was great to see some city employees, some neighborhood folks. Want to give a shout out to Nathan with Leno, he was there picking up bottles and trash all throughout, as well as Aurelius Christian, a few others. I see there's a Simon in the crowd was out there with us, so it was a great time, as well as Officer Briggs was hand in hand with us for hours. And it was a great time to help clean up the community, people were congratulating us, there was great conversations about, you know, economic development, building community, and what it means to be a neighbor. So I just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity to serve, it was a great time.
Thank you. Are there others? All right, just very quickly to add on to that, I want to thank Delisa Fontaine with the Departments of Neighborhoods, Arts and Citizens Engagement, as well as Capital Air Recycling and Trash for helping kind of coordinate on that event. I would also like to thank Jason Wilks, the facilitator for Juvenile South Lansing, who was on hand and had, you know, a part to play in the organization, but also the Neighborhoods of Ever Woods, Lansing Neighborhood Organization, Coach Light Commons, as well as Loop and Rich, who are all involved as well. With that, Clerk Swope.
Thank you, President Hussein. I do want to mention, as many of you know, we have done redistricting here in the City of Lansing, which impacts all of our districts, all the way from our ward council number to United States Congress. And we've redrawn our ward and precinct boundaries, as well as many of our polling locations. So later this week, we will be mailing out about 80,000, 80-some thousand voter ID card, voter information cards to the folks of Lansing. So watch for that in the mail. For people, for many people, it will also include with it an absentee ballot application for the upcoming elections. So you can keep the information card portion of it, and then either use or recycle the other portion, but I do encourage you to keep that. You know, there's been, through redistricting, there's been quite a bit of change in our districts locally. You know, in the past, our state senate district, we, the Ingham County portion has been in one district, and the Eaton County portion is in another district. Now that has completely changed, so the lines are different, and you may hear or know of a candidate, and they may or may not be in your district. So it's important that you be aware that those districts have changed. I do also want to mention, every time we do a big mailing like this, we hear from people who say, "This person hasn't lived here in however long." The best thing you can do is if you get a piece of mail to someone that no longer lives at that address, is write return to sender and put it back in your mailbox. That returned mail is part of our election security process. We use that to mark that voter, to put them in a, in a status that can eventually lead to them being removed from the rolls. But we are under state and federal law on the processes we have to follow. We do have to mail a voter ID card to every registered voter in the city, even some of them that we're pretty sure don't live here anymore. But you can help the process by, if you get something, whether they're your child, or who's moved away, or some other situation, just put it back, return to sender, and we will get that processed. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone has any community events, I'll give you one minute to, and I see no one jumping up, so we will go ahead and move on to speaker registration for public comment on show cause hearings and legislative matters. Show cause hearings would be the green form. If you received a notice regarding 3337 Viking Road, please, and wish to speak, please go ahead and jump up and grab Suella. And then for the legislative matters, that's the blue form, that includes items five through seven, which are public hearings, as well as items eight through 18 that the City Council is poised to act on this evening. So if you wish to speak about any of those things, please jump up and sign in with Suella in the white sweater in the back, and we'll get you, we'll give you about another minute to sign up. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I have a lot, so I'm going to go fast. First, I want to congratulate our finance team sitting in the front on the right, my right here. We're going to be sending council a letter, our Moody's rating was upgraded. We previously had a negative outlook, and we no longer have a negative outlook, so that is good news for our city. Thank you to the finance team, wonderful job. I want to congratulate a few folks. Capital City Suites, who's a new downtown store in Middle Village. Wonderful job to everybody at Fiesta. If you weren't there, it was a blast, it was a really good time. So thank you to Guillermo Lopez and everyone else involved with Fiesta. Thank you to everyone involved in our wonderful Memorial Day event. Chief Green was incredible in his comments. Councilman Daniels, off the cuff, gave just an incredible speech, so thank you, Councilman. Thank you to our firefighters and our police officers for everything that they do and for being there. I want to thank, I want to congratulate the Lansing Pharaohs, our basketball team, who made the playoffs. They lost in the first round, but they made the playoffs in their first year, so that's exciting. We had a wonderful block aid downtown. If you weren't there, there were tons of folks there, and that's awesome. We also, the next night, had our Art Path kickoff, along with our first concert in the park, right downtown. I want to thank the Moms Demand Action for their incredible Gun Sense event that they had at Everett, with just an incredible lineup of folks, including our Congresswoman and so many others. I want to thank our HRCS staff for their community celebration of diversity, and Chief Sturd event for his comments and swearing in, and thank you, Councilman Brown, for being there. That was wonderful. The Lansing Promise did a great job at Jackson Field, so... The Lansing Promise did a great job at Jackson Field, so anybody who missed that, you can check it out online. The Mayor's River Walk and Run went really well, and Councilman Jackson, I believe, came in second, first? First, came in first. It always, I say second, just joking, because he always comes in first, like minutes ahead of everybody else. I want to congratulate Malik Brown, Metro Malik. He has opened a new store in Old Town, where he's selling some really cool Lansing stuff. I didn't have a chance to congratulate Marilyn. They, they had a wonderful Juneteenth Negro League softball game a few days ago, and I got to throw the first pitch. In case anyone was wondering, I did throw underhand, and it was a ball to the right, but I got it over the plate, so I was proud. There's a lot going on this week. We've got our Lansing Fire Department Cadet graduation. We have our next concert at the park, at Durant Park on Wednesday. You heard all about the Juneteenth events, Friday afternoon to St. Joe Park, and then the, the parade on Saturday. We have a drive-through mobile food distribution coming up on Saturday. We have the RE, the Rio Town Juneteenth Event. And then next week, don't forget about the Memorial Car Show, the Lansing Police Department Awards Ceremony. We have our next concert at Comstock Park. The Allen Place is opening up next week. We have our Black History 101 Mobile Museum here in City Hall, from 1:00 to 6:00, a week from Tuesday. We have a community music festival at Letts. We have a drive-through food distribution at Tabernacle of David on West Holmes. So as I am starting to say every week, if you think there's nothing to do in Lansing, you really got to look, because there's just a ton going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing and consideration of orders to make safer demolish to the, of 3337 Viking Road.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This came before public safety. The time that it was before public safety, no additional permits had been pulled, and no one was there from ownership of the property to speak at this time.
Okay, we have one speaker signed in for the show cause hearing, Ashanti Clayton. You have three minutes, sir. Step right up to the lectern.
Yeah, so basically, I purchased the property last year, and it was distressed, and I took care of the mechanicals, but I was having problems finding the builders, so I was trying to do everything I could before the framing was complete. So in the winter, I hired a contractor, had a verbal agreement with me, with him. He kind of stalled me out through the spring. That's when I realized he wasn't doing the work. So I've been looking for another contractor. I recently just hired BMG Construction, Ray Garcia. So we got a contract for, to get the roof inside, and we got a verbal agreement on that, and I just got the garage tore down. And I didn't even know the property was even still on the demo list, honestly. Once I started to work, the other contractor I had said he spoke to somebody down here, and it was, or somebody at Building Safety, and it wasn't even on the demo list anymore, because I wasn't receiving any mail for the property, or I would have had a more sense of urgency as far as getting it, you know, getting the rehab done faster.
Okay, thank, thank you. And the committee will take this up again, I believe, before anything moves further.
Yes, we will be taking this up on Thursday, June 16th, at 4:00, and it's on this floor, but it's in the conference room back here. Some of the requirements that we ask is, one, be able to demonstrate that you have funds to be able to make the repairs. Two, that you have a timeline that we work out with code compliance to make sure that it can be done in a timely manner. And the third is that your permits are pulled for the work that needs to be done. So it, that, that will be what the committee will be asking. So you're more than welcome to be here, again, Thursday at 4:00, back here in the conference room.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we are to, we'll go ahead to referral of the show cause hearing.
Public safety.
Okay, and then to public comment on legislative matters. As I indicated, that's Items 8 through 18, as well as the three public hearings. One is the Local Development Finance Authority Financing Development Plan Amendment for the Lansing Regional Smart Zone. Item number six is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of trash, trash weed and grass violation ordinance amendment. And number seven is re-adopting the codified ordinances.
All right, and as it pertains to the three scheduled public hearings, Vice President Wood on all three.
Thank you, President Hussein. For the first one, we're going to have Chris Klein and Mitch Timmerman come forward, and they will address us on the Local Development and Finance Authority tax increment. The second public hearing has to do with an amendment to our, our ordinances dealing with grass violations and how those are noticed. And the third one, as we remember, this time of year, we re-codify all of our ordinances to make sure that they are all up to date at this time. So if you could please, gentlemen, come to the table up in front, then you can make the presentation on the Local Development Finance Authority. And Chris, you know how to make the microphone work.
I do. Good evening, and thank you. Chris Klein and Mitch Timmerman, from LEAP in Lansing, EDC. Mitch is going to present for you.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Members. Like Chris said, I'm Mitch Timmerman with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership, and we're here today in lieu of Tim Dempsey. He unfortunately contracted COVID-19. He's with public sector consultants, and he's the individual we've been working on getting this extension through. Just a little background for this, so the LDFA was established in 2005, and a TIF plan was also approved and passed in 2006. That plan had a lifetime or lifespan of 15 years, and expired in 2021. And so what the cities of East Lansing and Lansing are trying to do is extend that plan by an additional five years, which will allow for additional funds to be captured and utilized by the LDFA for the local regional smart zone, or the Lansing Regional Smart Zone. Just a couple of quick highlights in the plan. There's no additional capture on the city side for state taxes, as well as an establishment of a Rising Tide Fund, which allows for 10% of the captured taxes to be utilized within any of the boundaries for the Lansing Regional Smart Zone. So it'll help continue to be utilized for, you know, entrepreneurship, innovation, and commercialization of technologies that come out of Michigan State University. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have regarding that.
All right, do we have any questions from Council Members? Saying none, we appreciate you two being here tonight. Thanks so much.
Okay, for the public comment portion, we have Randy Deikeis, followed by Elaine Fishoff.
Randy Deikeis, 418 North Thickemore. And I'm here tonight to strongly support the resolution that you have in front of you to commit to climate protection and environmental justice. Resolution is a result of many hours of work by the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Sustainability, and particularly this Sustainability Manager, Lori Welch. It's an aspirational statement that begs for follow-up action by city administration and city council. As stated in the resolution in one of the warehouse clauses, in 2017, Council passed a resolution affirming its intent to take actions on climate change in accordance with the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement. Now here we are, five years later, looking at another resolution. While the climate crisis worsens with each passing day, resolutions should not be, be exercises to feel good and believe action has been taken, while nothing's really been done, to reduce greenhouse gases that are released in the atmosphere. I strongly urge this council to make climate a central part of your planning and funding across all city departments, councils, and commissions. Now, it would be erroneous to say that nothing's happened after the 2017 resolution. Much has, much has happened. We do now have the Mayor's Sustainability Commission, a full-time staff person. That's a lot. But much more needs to be done. Talking the talk is the easy part. Walking the walk takes political will, and to take meaningful actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Some examples of things that could be done, find ways to get people out of their cars, and on their feet, and on their bikes, and then to CADA, Public Transportation. Create incentives for residents to weatherize their homes, and use electricity from renewable resources. And piggyback on the state of Michigan's decision to use electricity from renewable resources for all of its state buildings. Since many of these buildings are in Lansing, a joint action seems highly appropriate and kind of a no-brainer. And lastly, appoint climate-friendly members to every board and commission, especially the Board of Commissioners at BWL. Please, please, please do not let this just be another feel-good exercise. If we're going to ride to the challenge of climate change, all of us need your leadership to show the way to a low-carbon and just future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elaine Fishoff.
Good evening. Elaine Fishoff, Lansing resident. I would echo Randy's comments with respect to Item 10, the climate resolution. I was actually here in November 2019, over two and a half years ago, offering a emergency, climate emergency resolution to this body. Unfortunately, it wasn't passed or considered, but since then, the mayor has stepped forward, and as Randy said, established a position for a Sustainability Manager, and established a, an advisory, the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Sustainability. I hope that you will pass the resolution before you today, and so we can go forward. So what should be the next steps? Randy has identified some concrete actions that could be taken and are measurable to address greenhouse gas emissions, and otherwise address sustainability. I would suggest that this council consider as a next step establishing its own environmental commission to advise it on, on these issues. The mayor has his commission, but I think this council needs some advice and assistance from people who are interested and knowledgeable about environmental matters. The, the, such a board or commission could, could address the, any plans or actions presented by the administration. They could advise the council as to goals, policies, ordinances, codes, funds, personnel, and actions the council should take in the matters of handling water, waste material, land use, transportation vehicles, energy production and efficiency measures, and building energy and efficiency ma, ma, measures. Such a board could be representative of and a source of feedback from Lansing residents, businesses, and industries in all matters environmental. Such a board could give council its comment on the likely impact on the Lansing's, on Lansing's workforce, as well as its disadvantaged communities. Where this council has set as one of its primary goals, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And creating such a board would demonstrate the council's commitment to its actions expressed in the resolution. I would note that, that the, the last two paragraphs address what the council has committed to, and it, it has committed itself to underscoring, oops. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was our final speaker, so on the referral of the public hearings, number five, LDFA.
Development and Planning.
Number six, the Trash Violation Ordinance.
Public Safety.
And number seven, re-adopting the codified ordinances.
Committee of the whole.
All right, we are now to the consent agenda. Items eight and nine on the consent agenda were already taken care of under the special ceremonies.
All right, so for the balance of the consent agenda, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. We will be pulling Item 10, the Commitment to Climate Protection and Environmental Justice, and Item 11, which is encouraging the Michigan Legislature to prioritize issues of housing. These will be taken up under passage of resolutions. And the rest of the consent agenda, what we have is the ballot proposal, which is a charter, city charter amendment to modify the requirements to serve on boards, commissions, or committees by those who, with felony convictions, would be able to be appointed to those boards. This is a ballot proposal that would go on in November. Next, we have a series of reappointments to various boards. Next, we have community funding for the REO's Transportation Museum of $500. Next, we have setting the public hearing for an ordinance to amend Chapter 1060, which is the licensing of waste haulers. There were changes made to that ordinance when it backed committee, so we are having to set a new public hearing on that. So with that, I would move those resolutions.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to resolutions for action, and actually, item number, back to item number 10, which was moved from the consent agenda.
All right, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to take a short time to speak on this. I had some things I wanted to say, but Randy, don't hurt me, and Elaine took care of it perfectly. But this is one of the most serious problems that anybody, any of us can face, and I don't think people realize it, so all I'm asking is for people to try to educate themselves more. Just Google IPCC, it's the International Panel on Climate Change, it's scientists from all across the world, and they call for urgent action and decisive action by governments around the world to make rapid, far-reaching, and unprecedented changes in all aspects of society in order to limit global warming below a certain time. But the thing is, we're pretty much past that almost. We don't realize it, and we're gonna all, at some point, if we live long enough, or our children, understand what's happening. And I hope that we can just take these steps to have the infrastructure in place to be able to actually do something. We've heard the list of resolutions we've had from five years ago, two years ago, all these different things. We made a climate action plan. We got Lori, our Sustainability Manager, who worked on this also. But we're still taking non-binding action here, and we're still squabbling for like little bits of money to put towards this threat that's ultimately going to be realized by people. So the sooner we can realize it, the better. I just encourage everybody to read this, to try to Google stuff, and realize that. I mean, I wouldn't even speak about this if I didn't believe the scientists who say we got to do something. And then everybody points to governments to do it, local governments to do it. So that's us, and there's no way I can't speak on it, when I guess I'm one of the educated or believe the highly educated. So that's pretty much my position, and I encourage people to just try to do their own research, but rely on real sources of information, which I would say are the scientists, but, you know, others can say other things. But, um, so I'm glad we're taking this non-binding action, and I see we're listed as Conference of Mayors that does this for climate change, Climate Champions, Race to Zero, all these different things that we agree to. So, you know, I'll be on council, squabbling for money when it comes down to it again, and trying trying to make our priorities, I don't know, out looking. Thank you.
All right. We need a motion. Mr. Jackson?
I would move the resolution.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we have item 11 regarding the housing and resident safety.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. First, I'd like to move the substitute that we have in front of us, and then I'll talk to the resolution.
All right. So on the adoption of the substitute, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
This was a resolution that came out of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Housing and Residential Safety. There was a great deal of discussion about the idea of trying to put some type of ordinance in place that would require landlords, when housing was unsafe, to make accommodations for tenants. After Legal and our representative from the city attorney's office, Lisa Hagan, looked into this, it was determined that we did not have the ability to do such an ordinance, that this, there has to be some changes within the state legislation first. So what we have done is crafted what she has done, I shouldn't say we, what Hagan has done was crafted a resolution that's asking that the governor's office and the state legislature look at making those changes. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. We appreciate that. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Item 16, the noise special permit.
Councilman Daniels.
All right. Thank you, President Hussein. So 16, we have a noise special permit for the Michigan Department of Transportation request to allow construction of the Horsebrook Creek Culver Replacement Project on Grand River Avenue, east of Delta River Drive, from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM on the following days, on weekends, and anytime on, oh, sorry, any time on weekends or holidays from June 17, 2022 to June 30, 2022. I apologize. So M.DOT came in and actually presented this to us, and, and one of the things that was pointed out by council member Hussein was that they said, M.DOT said that they didn't actually need the overnight hours, but that they wanted to be able to work on the weekends. So, and City Operations, we passed an amended resolution allowing the permit on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's it.
All right.
And with that, I'd like to move the resolution.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Vice President Wood.
Since the neighborhood was noticed on this, how are we, are we going to ask that M.DOT notice the neighbors that, of what we're passing tonight?
And I'm sorry, I was sidebar-ing with the city attorney. What was, what was the question?
The question was, since the neighborhood was noticed on this and came forward, are we gonna ask M.DOT to notice the neighborhood, letting them know what the changes are in this?
Yeah. So let me first say that we appreciate the public for being involved, not only at the committee level, but also, you know, here before, the entire body as part of the public hearing. But I also want to thank M.DOT and also the contractor have been involved, who, you know, is, they've, they've listened, they were amenable to the changes, and that they did demonstrate that if they need to work on the weekends, they will, they will notice the folks within that area.
Okay. And, and then I think there was some question about debris and that on some property. Was that something else they were looking into?
We did not address that. Councilman Daniels, do you recall?
We did not.
No. So what we, so what we can do, we can circle back with our contacts at M.DOT. And it looks like Clerk Swob might have something to add.
Yeah, some of the debris may not have been the result of the roadwork. It may have been a different project in the same area.
All right. Thank you.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Councilman Jackson.
Just really quickly, you kind of highlighted that we did hear a lot from the neighbors up there, and, you know, whether they knew the whole, you know, complexity of the project or not, and what it really meant, they did express a strong concern about at least having their weekends or at least having certain times, and they were kind of against the increased time-wise, even though it might shorten the project. And, you know, without hearing otherwise, you know, no one necessarily came back and said, I changed my mind or anything. So it'll just be hard for me to support that, just because it's their neighborhood there, and I don't think I can go against as many people that came out on this one. So I won't be supporting it.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five to one.
Okay. We have a claim appeal, item 17.
Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. So number 17, the claim appeal from Leek Bella for $4,040.90 in trash and second notice fees at 225 East Hazel Street. The property was cited four times, 10-19-2021, 10-26-2021, 10-27-2021, and 11-5-2021. During, in City Operations, they came in and spoke on the matter, and it really was more of a, an issue between the tenant and the landlord, but the property itself, the city did everything right, and so with that, we denied the claim.
Got to move it.
Oh, and with that, I'd like to move the resolution.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Item 18, the principal shopping district rule.
Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is a special assessment, the principal shopping district rule for fiscal year 2022, 2023. The assessor, Ms. Fishman, came in and proposed two changes to the ones listed as commercial but industrial in the past, and that was 33-01-09-255-032 and 33-01-09-404-013, and assessing them back to industrial. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
Yep. All right. There is a motion on the floor regarding number 18, special assessment for the principal shop, shopping district. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. We are to, speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So if you wish to speak to any city government-related matter, that's the yellow form in the back. You can sign up with Suella. We'll give you about another minute or two to jump up and complete form. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that proper referrals be meant by, be made by you, Mr. President.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. We have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Do you want to go?
Yes.
Okay. We have a liquor license for Pablo's Pandaria at 20, 2010 East Michigan Avenue.
City operations.
Liquor license for G.G. Holding at 3131 East Michigan Avenue.
City operations.
We have a grant application for the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Correction Program sub-grants.
Ways and Means.
Items from the mayor. We have two items relative to a noise special permit for Pennsylvania Avenue Reconstruction.
City operations.
We have the reappointment of Emily Jefferson to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Development and planning.
Community development block grant for the five-year consolidated plan.
Ways and Means.
Setting a show cause hearing and the orders for make safer demolish at 1224 Dakin Street.
Public safety.
The Lansing Board of Water and Light Return on Equity Agreement.
Committee of the whole.
Two items relative to make safer demolish to 5017 Hughes.
Public safety.
Two items relative to make safer demolished for 5019 Pleasant Grove.
Public safety.
And orders, two items for, orders to make safer demolish at 3025 Mahoney.
Public safety.
We have a list of appoints, reappointments that the council already acted on earlier tonight.
Committee of the whole, or I'm sorry, place on file.
We have the appointment of, we have the appointment of Robert Emerson to the Income Tax Board of Review.
Ways and Means.
Peter Jones to the Income Tax Board of Review.
Ways and Means.
Chris Klein to the Local Development Finance Authority.
Development and planning.
And amended and restated agreement regarding the operation of the Local Development Finance Authority.
Development and planning.
Two items relative to special assessment for snow and ice removal.
City operations.
And two items for brownfield plan number 81, Neogen Expansion at 720 East Chiawasi Street.
Development and planning.
MEDC support grant.
Ways and Means.
Grant application, 2022 State of Michigan Revitalize and Placemaking Grant.
Ways and Means.
And a redevelopment area liquor license for the Old Bag of Nails Pub at 210 Cascade Boulevard.
City operations.
Okay.
And before we move forward, I am going to, we had a bit of confusion regarding the noise waiver. We believe it's not spelled out in the city charter, but it is spelled out in the ordinance in terms of whether that's a five or six-person vote. Prior to the vote, I leaned into the city attorney's office. They had believed it was a five-vote item. They've since taken a look at the ordinance, and they've realized it is in fact a six-vote item. So Brian Daniels, we could entertain a motion to reconsider that as a five-vote item, and we could, we could work to pass that again, but again, we would need six votes from this body.
Motion to reconsider?
All right. There is a motion to reconsider on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing, yep. Councilman Jackson.
So could we table it for more people to come?
The, the issue is, the work is, it's ongoing. And so with regard to the, the timeline, we wouldn't be able to, to take a look at it beforehand.
Could you, could we table it and they start their work, and then the next week or so they get the full waiver? Or that they start whatever, knowing that there's gonna be another chance?
Let me, let me first turn it to Vice President Wood, and then if there's still some measure of question that hasn't been exhausted, we'll turn it over to Councilman Daniels. Vice President Wood.
A couple of things. One, our next meeting isn't until the 27th, and this waiver that we have was for June 17 through June 30. So the project will be almost done that time. Plus, on the 27th, we have two council members that will not be here for that meeting as well. So Councilmember Hussein will be gone, and Councilmember Spitzley will be gone. So we could be in the same situation again.
And just, just as a reminder, before we vote on the reconsideration, then, and then take a, a look again at this issue, we, we did work with, as, as part of the committee process, we did work with M.DOT, we did work with the contractor, and we did work with residents, particularly through email and things of that nature. And we did not hear the same resistance to weekend work that we did the 24/7 work. And even when we discussed the fact that we would, or I should, I should say that we would look at approving eight to eight, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday, even at that point, M.DOT did tell us that this, this particular contractor still believes they can get the work done on the weekdays, but this just allows for that flexibility. So again, this was a work of cooperation, if that helps. And so with that being said, the issue of reconsideration. Is there further questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Councilman Daniels.
All right. I'd like to move the resolution.
All right. There is a resolution on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. We are now to motion of excused absence.
Councilman Brown.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Garza and Councilwoman Spitzley.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any other council member remarks? Seeing none.
Additional remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
I do have one. As you've probably all heard, it's gonna be high 90s this week, 97, 98 degrees on Wednesday. Please, as you have need, we have our cooling centers on our website at lansingmi.gov/coolingcenters, all one word. We're also gonna put it on social media tomorrow morning with the link, so that way, as we have folks that, that need cooling centers during the intense heat, we can point them all there. Similarly, in the winter, we have the same website, lansingmi.gov/warmingcenters. So we've got all that on the website. I know we've talked about that in the past. I know Councilwoman Wood has, has asked me about that with seniors, and so we are gonna get it up on social medias, but also people can go through the link. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are to, oops. Okay. We are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Daniel Arnold.
I am Nicholas Zandi of Decentralized Lansing, and I have, and I'm here to arrange scheduling for possible meetings to act, scheduling for possible means to actually get the Decentralized Lansing proposal on the ballot, either July 11 or July 25, as they are the only dates before the August deadline that I'll be available, as I will be going somewhere on vacation during the Dune 27 meeting. And I am willing to give council some time to discuss any changes they would make to it. I hope you review those two meeting dates and finalize one of them, because it has to be done by the deadline in August. And the people of Lansing need to hear this issue come the November of election, because we need a city council that reflects what the people in the middle of the palm of Michigan want, and not just the top 1%, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Arnold, followed by David Ellis.
Friends, this is your fan, Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy, Smiley. Every moment living in Lansing is a treasure to me. You care about the poor. You have a thing for the out-of-the-box extravagant arts. I'm beyond happy to be alive here. This is where I belong. My dreams come alive here. Summer air, crisp winter breeze, as I dart from building to spectacle. I live at Riverfront Apartments, three-quarters of a mile from Michigan State Capitol, one mile from Crossroads Church Old Town, one mile from the bus station and Justice and Mental Health drop-in. I'm putting these words together in the accommodating library, Capillary District Library, in the middle of it all. Please take the time to share this city with me. I will make time for you to have an adventure with Smiley Tours, River Trail, creative spots, eight government properties, including the Capitol. Your hard work dedication to Lansing, all of you council members, Mayor Andy Shore, people watching touches my heart. I live on disability and had a housing voucher for about seven years. I can never repay you for your commitment and service, whether you are beautifying grave sites, Loretta Stanway, she's always coming to this, I didn't see her today, but I just appreciate her work, honoring veterans, cityhood, feeding me with love and accountability crossroads, talking to me daily, security police, cheering me on in recovery, community mental health of Clinton Eaton Ingham Counties. The list goes on and on. I can never repay you. I'm in debt and outrageously blessed. The two things I can do are hand you one of my books or take you around to see the gorgeous capital city of Lansing. It's enthralling. It's enthralling how God uses many people to take care of others through city rescue mission, park feedings, retail store in Lansing Mall. Let us express our gratitude for each other every day, and to God the Creator, much love. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have David Ellis, followed by Harshna Kahal.
All right, so I just wanted to have a quick comment on Operation Slowdown for any of you who do not know that is the city's project of citizens' competition of streets to have, um, no, it's fine, it's fine, um, to have traffic calming measures put in place on the road. I want to start off by saying that I really, really like Operation Slowdown, and I would go as far as to say as I think traffic calming and making city streets more walkable for pedestrians and cyclists is one of the most important things we can be doing for our downtown. That being said, I feel that Operation Slowdown has a lot of flaws in it going back decades with the project. First of all, much of the website for it is clunky and unreliable, as in it contradicts itself in many times and isn't clear on other things. For example, part of it says that roads with primary fire routes are absolutely not con, uh, contestants for Operation Slowdown, and yet, different parts of it talk about the different methods of traffic calming that can be used for those roads. So it's just not a very intuitive thing to go through. Secondly, the, the one that bothers me most is there is a hard limit of a thirty-five mile per hour, eighty-fifth percentile speed. What that means is that fifteen, uh, for a road to be considered for traffic calming, fifteen percent of drivers on the road have to be going faster than thirty-five miles per hour for a twenty-five mile per hour road. What this means is that roads that where the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour will have over eighty percent of drivers speeding, with fifteen percent going ten over. That is a incredibly, incredibly high bar to be setting for roads, which is excluding so many parts of the city. The reason that this was put in place was in two thousand and five, there was an effectiveness report done that showed roads with the, where the speed was below that thirty-five mile per hour bar, citizens weren't happy with the results. The results, it, it, the, it showed that the results were there, that the, the speeds were being limited on those roads, but people weren't happy, so they were entirely cut out from the project, which is, it's dumb to me. There's no other word for it. It is just silly. It is stupid. The fact that twenty years ago, people were saying that the city wasn't doing enough for them, so the city's decision was to completely cut them out of the project is inane. It's, I, I don't even have any other words for it. It's crazy. Obviously, this is over, well, about twenty years ago, so I'm not even sure if this was city council's doing, and even if it was, it was most likely none of you there for it. That being said, I think it's time that we take what should be a great, great project and bring it from two thousand and five to twenty twenty-two and have it be something that we can all take part in. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Harshna Kahal, followed by Michelle Medler.
Hello, my name is Harshna Jahal. You were kind of close. Um, a little about myself, I'm currently the Health Safety Wellness Director for Michigan State University undergraduate students, but more importantly, I'm a local. Um, I'm here speaking on behalf of seven Lansing slash, East Lansing slash Okmes-based organizations, which are Mission Menstruation, Helping Women Period, Associated Students of Michigan State University, Women's Center of Greater Lansing, Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health, B.A. Rose, and P.A.D. the Midin. We are urging the Lansing City Council members to create and pass a bill that allow menstrual products, AKA period products, to be free in all Lansing public restrooms. For the many who menstruate in Michigan, the cost of menstrual products is expensive, especially for those from lower income backgrounds. Insufficient access to menstrual products, therefore, threatens the well-being of those who menstruate. Poor menstrual hygiene management often cause people to use toilet paper or makeshift pads or tampons or wearing a menstrual product for too long than recommended. These practices increases the risk for UTIs, toxic shock syndrome, and bacterial infections. Because a person who menstruate may miss school or work because they're unable to have access to menstrual products, barriers to academic and professional successes are formed too. Mission Menstruation has been addressing these particular issues since twenty eighteen. Their nonprofit began as initiative to provide free menstrual products to MSU community. With the help of Associated Students of Michigan State University and P.A.D. the Mission, P.A.D. the Midin, those efforts were expanded, but, but also limited because staff and students living off of campus cannot regularly receive menstrual products found on campus. A period costs about nine months, or nine dollars a month, sorry, but this cost does not account for the extra laundry needed to wash if period leaks and the medications, such as painkillers purchased to treat period cramps and other related symptoms. Helping Women Period, B.A. Rose, and P.A.D. the Midin donated menstrual products to crowds from Michigan. Last year, Helping Women Period donated over seventy, seven-hundred thousand menstrual products to school and original religious areas and safe houses in Michigan. Over thirty percent of all those menstrual products have been directly donated within the city of East Lansing, or, sorry, City of Lansing, East Lansing and Okmes. Now, I'm here to talk to you about having, um, ordinance created to have free menstrual products in public restrooms, because it would send a message to many people who are, cannot afford menstrual products that Lansing City Councils are sending a message that no one has to choose between buying groceries and menstrual products, or even having to miss school or work, because there's, sadly enough, one in five girls have to miss school because of lack of menstrual products. I'm here because I want to start the conversation going and show this ongoing problem that's been hurting a specific group of people who can't afford menstrual products. Um, I'll be here after the meeting, and I would love to work with any of y'all, and I'll be over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our final speaker is Michelle Medler.
All right, I think I should win the award for the quietest kids ever at council. Anyway, just for that, um, my name is Michelle Medler. I'm a spokesman for, uh, the Capital City Family BMX at Guyer Park here in Lansing. Um, we are making a plea for consideration for funding, um, to build a pump track for, uh, the location right next to our BMX track. Just a little bit about, um, Capital City is that we're a nonprofit track. We are run purely by volunteers. We have very little to no money. Um, this would be another source of, um, attraction essentially for our track. Um, if there was a pump track, a paved pump track, which is what we're requesting, um, there will be no maintenance to it. It'd be a one-and-done essentially. So it would be, uh, access, and I believe they even, they've proposed, uh, wheelchair access as well. So it would be a paved pump track where a lot of riders, whether they are BMX or local, uh, children from the community could ride. Um, as a BMX rider, we don't always get to ride our track. If it's wet out and it's rained a ton like it has, we've had to cancel races many times. This time, you can still come and ride, even if it has dried up a little bit, if it was paved. Um, the other big attraction to that is BMX people love to do pump tracks, because, um, when you ride, you have to pump through some rhythm sections, and you don't get to experience that anywhere. That's just a very, very unique situation to, um, BMX riders. Um, that being said, there's literally one paved pump track like within, like, two hundred miles, and it's in Rudolph, Ohio. Ask me how I know that, because we've gone there several times. My kids ride, my, all three of my children ride. So there's no other pump track that's paved in the state of Michigan. There is one in Livonia that is cement, and it's very small, but that's beside the point. Um, because this would be the only pump track next to a BMX facility. So a lot of us as riders, especially, for example, we go to Marquette for riding, because we are one of six tracks in the state, um, we will ride the pump track up there that is at an elementary school. So kids will, and families, will make it a day of going to a race where we had two, over two-hundred-and-fifty riders last Saturday at our state qualifier, over sixty motos. Um, they'll make a, a weekend essentially of it. They'll go to the state race, stay the night, go to the pump track, or go to the pump track, stay the night, and do the race. So this would be a viable economic boost for our community as well. Um, and in August, we're having a gold cup, and we would love for you to come out and see us and see what we're able to do.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
All right, with no other business before the body, we are adjourned at eight twenty-two.